That's next. Okay, welcome to the Board Supervisor meeting. We're going to adjourn now for our nine o'clock executive session. We'll be back by 9:30. Okay, it's 9:30. Let's call this meeting to order. This morning, we have our invocation to be led by Reverend Paul Daniel from the First Southern Baptist Church in Kingman.
Thank you. Shall we pray? Our Father and our God, we thank you for the freedoms that we cherish as American citizens. Thank you for our country, and we ask you to bless it. We thank you for our community leaders, such as this group of leaders today in this meeting. We pray you'll bless them with wisdom and knowledge, help them to make decisions according to your will for us. Thank you for the Bible, which is our guide. We pray now that you'll bless this meeting as only you can do, and we pray it in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Supervisor Watson?
You follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Okay, I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on October 20th, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03.
So moved.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Are there any committee reports or legislative reports this morning? Supervisor Johnson?
I don't believe so, thank you, Madam Chair.
I have.
No, we'll start here.
Just a quick report on essential air service for Kingman. The Kingman Airport Authority, through Dave French, its Executive Director, has indicated that we have a stay on the essential air service, and we will be able to use that service for an additional year. It will expire on September 30th, 2015. The central core of this is the daily planning and de-planning and the usage of the service. If we don't, if the community, the county, or the folks in the area do not start using this essential service, we will certainly lose it. And we need in the proximity of anywhere from 10 to 12 deployments a day, average, in order to continue service after 2015. So it's very important to, if we want to make sure that we keep this service, to try to do the best we can to influence as many people as we can to use that service. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Moss?
Last week, I attended a technical work group for the Bureau of Reclamation regarding the Planet Ranch issue. They were considering the pros and cons of whether they would support the transfer of Planet Ranch. The sense I received from that meeting was that most of the voting members were inclined to support that transfer. The reason being is there is mitigation issues that they have to complete along the Colorado River when it comes to wildlife and habitat and things of that nature. For those who are not familiar, the Planet Ranch issue is where, as there's a portion of Mojave County and going into La Paz County, roughly by memory, and I could be slightly wrong, 8,600 or so acres of ground, which will be taken out of private ownership and be placed in the ownership of the state or federal government as part of Phase 1. Roughly 10,000 acre feet of water will be transferred as part of that process. That water will be used for the mitigation along the Colorado River. The difficulty the county has with it, which I then informed the Bureau of Reclamation in writing on behalf of Mojave County, is twofold. There are going to be multiple steps in this transfer. What I just relayed to you is the first step. For those who don't know, 10,000 acre feet of water is 20,000 homes. It is roughly 80,000 to 100,000 residents. If that goes into federal or state ownership for purposes of mitigation, that is 80,000 to 100,000 residents of Mojave County, Arizona, who will never be able to come. It will have an extreme impact on our potential and future growth. The land being talked about is also along the proposed I-11 corridor, at least a large section of it, which means that we will not be able to make any economic development in that particular area. That, though, is just the first step. There are plans, there is part of the plan that the Walupi tribe, who are good neighbors of ours, would have several options to purchase along that same corridor, and that that same corridor would then, that land that they do exercise their option, is much greater than the first withdrawal that I first, that I outlined. And also because of certain water rights that they would possess and their right to take that land into trust if they so desired, Mojave County will have an easier, larger hit to its private property tax base and future water for development. That is one of many water and land issues facing Mojave County. It is a very serious issue. For those of you who are listening, I would put it to you this way. Mojave County's county government, fire departments, school districts, libraries, all of it depends upon private property ownership because it's private property taxes which pay for a very large amount of those services. The more land that is taken out of Mojave County and then put into either tribal, state, or federal ownership, the less in taxes that are coming in. That means that your taxing authorities have two choices. They can either reduce services, or they can cut, or raise taxes. There is no good solution to Mojave County voters and taxpayers if this trend continues. And it is a trend. Decades ago, 17% of Mojave County was owned privately. We're now down at 16. Based upon future, this current pattern that's occurring, that percentage will decrease. I would highly recommend that anyone who's concerned about this trend, contact their congressman. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Moss. Anyone else? Okay, number three, do we have a county administrator's report?
Madam Chairman, no report today, thank you.
Number four, approval of the July 7th, 2014 Board of Supervisor Meeting minutes.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, call to public. Those wishing to address the board at the call to public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. We have one person signed up, our friend Mark Shaver.
For those who are viewing, I brought a flow chart. And those who may not be aware of what these flow charts are. I'm here to ask that the board give consideration and to put on a future agenda according to Arizona State Statute 38-431.01H. That the matter of discussion that we have concerning public participation on the subcommittee representing the five districts be talked about. All I ask is for one person to be a champion to have this referred to, so that we can have a public discussion on whether or not there should be citizens participating on that subcommittee. If not, why not?
That's it?
I hope I have a champion up there.
Okay. Okay, anyone else want to say anything? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I want to make a comment. Thank you, Mark, for presenting this over and over again. And I think that you finally have voiced your opinion enough to where the rest of us understand that citizen participation is very important. I have talked to Mr. Nick Hahn, and he's in agreement with that. So I don't think there's any controversy as to whether or not we want citizen participation. In fact, we will solicit citizen participation. And I think it should be brought up on the agenda for the P&amp;Z meeting, and I support that.
I'm confused, are we talking about participating on the subcommittee? There's a big distinction there.
Whether it's called a subcommittee or not, I think should be discussed at the next meeting.
Chairman, a point of order. I believe any further discussion other than just the presentation.
It should be referred to as what I'm asking for.
Okay, well, we got the point, you've come up before us, and we understand your issue. So thank you very much, Mr. Shaver. Thank you. Okay, anyone else like to speak to call to public? Okay, I'm going to close the call to public. Next up, we have a couple of presentations, proclamations, actually. First is an endorsement of a proclamation proclaiming the month of October 2014 as domestic violence awareness month. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up is adoption of a proclamation naming the month of October as Cyber Security Month in Mojave County.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And if anyone wants to read those proclamations, you can go to our county website, and they are there in full. All right, next is our consent agenda. The consent agenda items 5 to 55 will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Do we have any items, supervisors?
50.
50. Anything else? Supervisors?
Motion to approve, consent 5 through 56 minus 50.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item 50. Approve a general fund contingency transfer in the amount of $27,500 to the voter registration budget, 10013200, to cover general election overtime and temporary employees. Do we have our, oh, we have Kim Stewart here to speak to this?
Hello.
Don't we usually budget for this every other year when we have an election? Isn't this already covered? Is this an addition?
We do. I'll put my past budget on here so you can see. We do normally, and you can see in the 2012 general election cycle, it was there, and it was quite honestly just an oversight this year that we did not put that money in ahead of time. I was doing a big project, a feasibility study, on outsourcing our ballots, and I just didn't even look at that. It just walked right by all of us, and I didn't even notice it. So it was just an oversight on my part that it wasn't included in the original budget this time around.
Now, when you do your budget, you have to go before financing those people. They're supposed to look at these prior years, nobody?
Yeah, John missed it too, all of us missed it. It was just an oversight by everybody, it was amazing that nobody caught it this time around.
And then is that saying pretty standard on the amount of overtime it takes during an election year?
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty close.
27,000 cover the general election also?
That should, yeah, that should cover where we're already sitting right now and what we'll need to finish this out, hopefully, that will, should be total.
Those are the only questions I had, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Kim.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to approve item number 50.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public hearings. I'm opening up the public hearing for 57A, Ray amended fiscal year 2014 CDBG projects and application. Do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing. And 57B, discussion of possible action, adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution number 2014-142, authorizing the submission of amended application for fiscal year 2014 state community development block grant, CDBG funds.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Regular agenda, number 58, discussion of possible action to approve a standard employee housing agreement for Mojave County employees assigned no-cost housing at Davis Camp and Walupi Mountain Park for purpose of providing after-hours accessibility and rapid response to emergency-based mechanical, medical, and law enforcement incidents, and authorize the park administrator to administer the agreements with assigned employees. We continued this from our September 2nd, 2014 meeting. Do we have any action, any motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 59, discussion of possible action, adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution number 2014-149, abandoning that portion of Catherine Drive 30 feet in width by 70 feet long, containing .05 acres, more or less, reserving existing utility infrastructures of a 20-foot wide easement, and further approves the abandonment to be processed and rights-of-way purchased per Arizona revised statutes Title 28, Chapter 20, Article 8, at no cost to Mojave County, located in the Lake Mead National Recreation Area at Lake Mojave, Catherine Landing, District 2 of Mojave County, Arizona.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve item 59 of the agenda.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 60, discussion of possible action, adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution number 2014-153, authorizing the Development Service Director, excuse me, to negotiate with the Bureau of Land Management to develop and sign on behalf of the county a memorandum of understanding recognizing Mojave County as a cooperating agency in any NEPA process for the roads-land exchange. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Number 61, discussion of possible action, clarification of Mojave County's policies regarding smoke-free facilities. This was continued from our meeting of September 2nd and September 15th.
Madam Chair, motion for discussion.
We have a person on the?
I?
I signed up for 60.
I know, but we, it's my, it's through my discretion, and I'm just going to move on.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion for discussion, item number 61, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion to discuss?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Has everybody had a chance to look over all the backup? And I guess happy with it, staff is happy, the attorneys are happy? I think it covers everything so that our employees understand, so they're not left in limbo.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I believe from Supervisor Johnson's, because this is Supervisor Johnson's item, staff looked at it from the supervisor's perspective to try to come up with the best recommendation for the signing that was all-encompassing, and yes, we went through HR, we, HR did the policy. I think we, as staff, is comfortable and believe that what we presented to the board will accomplish what's, what the intent would be to not have e-cigarettes or any type of smoking within our facilities. And we came up with an appropriate posting, also, at a cost.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I have two comments on this. And I certainly understand the desire to ban smoking and things that assimilate smoking. But I'm having something of a philosophical quandary here in that I believe that we as a county should be banning issues which promote the, or acting against issues to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the public. I don't believe e-cigarettes, from what I've read, or at least we don't know that e-cigarettes, from what I have read, cause any health, safety, or welfare concerns. We're banning them because they look like a cigarette, even though it's not smoke, which is what we're banning, it's water vapor. And it seems to me it's we're banning, it's the equivalent of banning an AR-15 because it looks mean, when in reality, it's only just a semi-automatic rifle, like thousands of other hunting rifles out there. So without a clear harm to the public by the use of e-cigarettes, because it's just water vapor coming out of the end of it, I don't think we should be equating it to a carcinogenic tobacco product which is filled with chemicals and is coming out in the form of smoke, because it's not smoke, it's water vapor. So that's my problem with this proposal.
Okay, I'm going to say something. I was with you for a while, and then my assistant came in with an e-cigarette, and she took a puff and blew it in my face, and I almost threw up. It was, you know, these things, some of it have, some of it does have some tobacco in it. They're all, the problem is there are so many different types now. Some even have hemp, and, they do, hemp cigarettes. And some of them have different odors and smells. And if we're going to make a policy, I think it has to be all-encompassing. We're going to have complaints, it's going to cause a problem, so I'm, I think we need a big overall policy. And, you know, if we're going to say smoking, there's, you know, everything in the country is smoking, it's just another replacement, and I think it's going to cause problems in the county.
My rebuttal to that, Madam Chair, would be, we're then banning an odor. We're not banning a carcinogenic product. And if that's the case, we are going to have to consider banning perfumes, colons, and people who do not bathe regularly in our county buildings.
But some of them do have a little tobacco in it, how do we, they do.
They have nicotine in them, not tobacco, and there's a difference between the two.
I think that if we're going to make a policy, we don't make it vague.
Madam Chair, and I think I just, you know, received an ad on Miracle Smoke, most powerful cannabis e-liquid available to use in the vapor starter, along with the vapor starter kit. But I think the reason I brought it was more for what you were talking about, where people are coming in and our employees, you know, how do you differentiate? I've never seen a cigarette between somebody smoking and somebody using something that's not smoke. So I think this would clarify that in the county facility.
It's only in the facility, it can still go outside like?
I think this policy will make, we've had a problem with having campuses and then having facilities. So I think this will bring everybody?
So I think this will bring everybody under one, one banner from now on. So you can't say, oh, it's okay in District Two at their library to smoke outside their door, where I think this will make it all a campus facilities.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, if I could, could we have our HR director, Ken Cunningham, come and clarify that? Because I think our understanding's a little different.
Okay.
Madam Chair and Supervisors, in the current policy that is being proposed today, it is just the buildings, it is not campus-wide. Because we have a department that has employees who cannot leave the campus to smoke, they go outside in the designated smoking area. So the current policy is just the buildings. You cannot smoke anything inside the buildings.
I have a question. So you're telling me that, I thought this, this facility we're on today is a camp, is smoke-free campus, where if our employees have to cross the street to smoke?
This current facility is a campus-wide facility.
So I guess, what is your recommendation? How do I tell the people in this building they have to get off campus, but the people in our other buildings, they don't have to get off campus?
A couple of the, well, the department in question is on this campus, the Sheriff's Department has the public safety dispatchers who cannot leave their, the campus, they go outside, and then they smoke in a designated smoking area. So if we make it campus-wide, they're on this campus, so that would penalize that department for people who, basically would tell them that they cannot smoke, period, during their eight, ten-hour shift, because they cannot leave the campus.
So if they're on this campus now, then they're already violating the policy that has been in place for, what, eight years? I guess my thing is not so much, I mean, I understand that if they're locked in, they can't leave, I have no problem. Smoking's never been a problem of mine. But the other facilities, say the Bullhead or the Havasu Facility or our other, we own so many properties, if the rules change, how do our people know? If we have it all campus free for everyone, then everybody knows? Or we say it's not, you know, it's just building?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, it was at least my intent, and I believe our policy reflected this, is the restrictions on our facilities is a state law. You know, public buildings, you can't smoke within, I believe, twenty foot of the front door. We have certain other, more restrictive restrictions on, on, like, say, this campus. The only thing that I intended to change was not to make the smoking policies throughout the county more restrictive as to where you can and can't smoke. But it was my intent to include all types of smoking in those, on those restrictions, instead of just smoking cigarettes. So the restrictions where they apply would not change. The only thing that would change is that no smoking, whether it be e-cigarettes, regular cigarettes, pipes, cigars, that would all be inclusive, and no quote-unquote smoking.
Madam Chair, I guess if it's not addressed in this, it's something we can bring up later if board members are in, I just don't like, I like rules that apply to everybody, not just to one place. So with that, without going into that, unless somebody else has something?
I do have something to add, and it's not that I disagree with the intent that you're proposing, Supervisor Johnson. I understand, and personally, I think that people who walk into this building with an e-cigarette are being rude. I don't smoke cigarettes, I don't smoke e-cigarettes, I don't do anything like that. But rude should not be made illegal, unless there's a good public health, safety reason for doing that. And I'm looking at, for example, part of the proposal, and it says, "The following is a list of restricted smoke and tobacco products, and this list is not exhaustive: cigarettes, e-cigarettes, vapor cigarettes, cigars, pipe tobacco, and chewing tobacco." There's a problem with this, and that is, a e-cigarette or a vapor cigarette does not give off smoke, it gives off water vapor, and it does not use tobacco. And so it uses nicotine, a chemical component of tobacco. So we are applying a definition to e-cigarette and vapor cigarette, which is not, I think, legally supportable, because it doesn't give off smoke, it doesn't give, it doesn't use tobacco. So it's, if you would be better off if you said, "The following is a list of restricted nicotine products," because then it would be a definition which would make legal sense. But this does not work. I would still oppose it, because I don't think that the ve, e-cigarette or vapor cigarette would be a nicotine product which proposes a public health issue. But at least it would make common sense, it would fit the definition. As it is, we define something to be something it is not, and I think there's a problem with that. It's a lot like saying there's a zero to thirteen percent risk, our public clients, and we're complaining about that. We should be consistent, and I'm saying it's, we should be consistent in our definitions, this is inconsistent. And more, we should only be banning things if there's a public health issue. And when, at least I believe, from what I have read so far, there is no public health issue when it comes to e-cigarettes or vapor cigarettes, other than a bad odor. Though I do concede that people could put illegal drugs in those, but they could roll up illegal drugs anywhere, walk into doing something like that. But anyways, that's my, those are my issues. And it's not that big of a deal, except I'm going to vote my conscience on this.
I'd make, if everybody's done, I'd make a motion to go ahead and prove the clarification of the Mojave County policies regarding smoke-free facilities.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carried. Number sixty-two, discussion of possible action to approve the lease agreement with the Disabled American Veterans, Chapter twenty-seven, Lake Havasu City, for one hundred and sixty-eight square feet of space at ninety square feet located at the two thousand one College Drive Building in Lake Havasu City, and authorize the expenditure of up to five thousand from the general fund contingency for improvements to provide direct access to the outside of the building.
Madam Chair, motion for discussion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, the DAV was looking for some space. I made an offer that we had space probably available in our building that was being unused. They've taken a look at it and decided that it would fit their needs, and this is not a free deal, we're not giving them anything, they are paying the going rate for square footage. Why do I think they would be a good addition? I think, I would like to have somebody from the DAV come forward and maybe give us an explanation for people who don't understand what the DAV does. This is space that we're not using, I have photos that it's been used, it's just a catch-all storage space for years now, so. Maybe if somebody from the DAV would, would come forward to give us kind of an overview of what our Disabled American Veterans does for us?
Good morning. My name is Bud Watts, and I'm the current commander for DAV Chapter twenty-seven, located in Lake Havasu City, Arizona. The services that we provide our veterans in Mojave County are primarily threefold. The first is claims assistance. We have two certified service officers who attend to the many claims issues that the veterans have in submitting the proper paperwork to the VA. Our service officers have been certified by the National Service Officers in Phoenix. Secondly is direct monetary assistance. We receive requests from the veterans directly or through such agencies as the Veterans Resource Center in Bullhead City, or the Interagency, or St. Vincent's de Paul, et cetera, requesting help with such issues as their electric bill, the rent, or house payment, or card payment. We meet with the veterans and verify their veteran's history, and if the request is genuine, we make arrangements with the electric company, landlord, or bank, to make a payment for them and bring them up to current status. We recently had such a request from a single-parent veteran at about twelve-thirty in the afternoon. At four-thirty that afternoon, we were paying his electric bill, so that the electric company would turn his electricity bond back on the next day. He had three daughters, two of them were handicapped, it was a hundred and fifteen degrees that day. And lastly, we provide transportation for our veterans to both the Prescott and Phoenix VA hospitals. In two thousand thirteen, our volunteer drivers drove one hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight miles. They spent three thousand one hundred and eighty-three hours on the road, and transported one thousand one hundred and nineteen veterans to the hospital. Our numbers for last month, September alone, were eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-five miles driven, three hundred and five hours on the road, and transported seventy-two patients. Our drivers start their day at approximately four AM in the morning, and they're on the road until late in the afternoon. They pick up veterans in Lake Havasu, Kingman, or locations along the way as needed, and park her in court site while en route to Phoenix. The previous numbers that I mentioned do not include the hours spent manning our transportation desk and scheduling the veterans for their rights to the hospital, nor does it include the time spent by our service officers assisting veterans. You may have noticed that I indicated manning our transportation desk. That's because that's all we have at the VFW in Lake Havasu. These volunteers do all this work with a desk and a phone. There's literally no privacy to conduct our business, nor is there any for our service officers to assist our veterans. We try to meet with veterans needing personal assistance in their home if possible, or in our private vehicles in order to protect their privacy. We are in desperate need of an office where our volunteers can have a proper place to work and assist our veterans in Mojave County. None of our volunteers or our officers that are sitting behind me here receive a dime for what we do for our veterans. I ask that you grant our DAV Chapter twenty-seven lease request for the office space in question at the county facility in Lake Havasu. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you very much. Okay?
Any other question?
I, I have a question.
Okay.
They're doing a tremendous public service, they're paying ninety cents a square foot on a hundred and sixty-eight bucks, which would roughly come out to a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Can't we just do a nominal rental rate for them, like for a dollar a month? I mean, they're doing a service that we cannot do, and so, and they're aiding the, some of the most unfortunate and most noble members of our society. So why, why do we need the hundred and fifty bucks, roughly?
That's the going rate?
Well, it's the going rate, but, you know, we're treating it as a commercial transaction, when we should be saying, that's a hundred and fifty bucks they could use to help those people that need help and have earned help. It's not, we're not giving away anything, we're saying, some people paid it forward, some people did their good and suffered what they suffered on behalf of us decades ago, and this is us trying to give them some benefit for that. So that's, it's just.
I mean, I understand that Supervisor Moss, I guess the problem that I would have would be that then other people might come forward that are nonprofits or doing good, while obviously the veterans are close to my heart, how do I tell them that we're going to not charge them the money? I guess that's.
If they're the equivalent of a disabled veterans group, we'd probably consider it. And we're taking unanimous vote, as I understand the words, I mean, I'm a former Marine, so I want to help you guys. Some of my friends are in the boats that you have, that you're currently in. And so is there, I mean, it would take a unanimous vote, I believe, is that true, Mr. Ekstrom?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, the only problem I have with it is a gift of public monies problem. And even with a unanimous vote, you may be constrained against doing this. I'd be happy to research and see if there's any way under the county's authority that you can do it, but you can only do those things which you're specifically authorized to do.
Well, then how about we do this? If we make a motion to approve item sixty-two, and then direct Mr. Ekstrom, within the next thirty days, bring back to us our legal authority to make that, quote, "gift of public monies." My understanding of the statute is that we can do that with a unanimous vote, but if you need the time to confirm that, and then we can always reconsider it and adjust it downward if we feel the urge.
If, if you withdraw your motion, I could have another one just because of the timeline.
Sure.
My motion would be to direct staff to, or give staff the authority, the county man, Assistant County Administrator, the authority to sign the contract, because we have insurance to go on, and then if, and direct the county attorney to come back with possibly a alteration to the monthly rent, if it's appropriate.
Do an addendum.
That way, they know they've got the building, whether it's for a hundred and fifty or for a dollar, either one, so they can, they can plan.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrying off to sixty-three, discussion of possible action, request the Information Technology Director Nathan McDaniel to provide status updates on the codification and organizing of the data for the Mojave County Codification Project from the vendor awarded, from the vendor awarded the contract. Oh, there he is.
Morning Supervisors, County Administrator Hendricks Ekstrom. Well, I am here before you to update you on the status of the MuniCode ordinance codification project. Up until recently, I was not sure where we were at. My recent interactions with the MuniCode vendor yielded some results, actually, over this weekend. I have a tentative table of codification, and if Matt can throw that up on the screen for you, that'll give you an idea of some progress. As you, as you may know, this project basically started in December of last year, December fifth, I provided the vendor with all of the county's ordinances and resolutions. So technically, they began doing their data project in December. So based on the outline of the project, we paid them eight thousand dollars to kick off the project. Once we get some data back and go through legal review, we will pay them another six thousand four hundred and fifty, and then there will be a third step of the process, which is the finalization of the process, and we'll pay them the final invoice of six thousand four hundred and fifty. So right now, this is what we have as far as a tentative table of contents for the code, and then there's also an article I'd like to show you, which is obviously tentative. So Matt, if you could close the, the table of contents. So here's chapter four, animals. So this is an example of, of each article. And a lot of the work the county has to do, once we get this data back, is when you look through the, the data in this article, you'll see some of the stack, some of the text is, has strike-through text in it, which means that's an area of the article the county needs to basically review and make sure that it's correct. So at this point in time, I've been forwarding the information that I received to Ginny with the Clerk of the Board's Office, and Yvonne Orr with the County Administrator's Office. And I believe, you know, they possess the technical expertise when it comes to the legality of the ordinances and the clerical work that goes along with the ordinances. That's not really something that is my particular forte. I was primarily involved in the project early on in order to facilitate the exchange of data, which was electronically extract all of the resolutions and ordinances from our systems and deliver that data to them. But outside of that, I've had minimal interaction with them, and they're, you know, all of my inquiry to them, they pretty much said, "We're still in the organizational phase." And it wasn't until just recently, they actually started providing me some data back. So I would say we're still in the organizational phase with them. At least we have some, some data from them now to show us that there has been some significant progress, which I'm happy. I was concerned for a long time.
Madam Chair? When's this going to be complete, and we can put a codified and indexed set of county ordinances on the website, so our residents can actually see what local laws apply to them?
I would say, right now, I don't have an exact date for you. The timeline that we get from the vendor is this process could take anywhere from seven to twelve months, sometimes greater, depending on the amount of data they have to go through.
So we start in December, so we're looking at December, would be the outer end this coming December?
It could, it could even go further than twelve months, I'm guessing. Our, our project was basically, the estimate for our project was based on Pima County, doing, going through this project with MuniCode. So they looked at how much time and effort they had to spend in codifying Pima County's ordinances as kind of an estimate for us. Ours could be less, it could be more, I just don't, I don't really know. I don't have the quantitative data to give you. I mean, they're, they're pretty much doing one hundred percent of the work, and we're not yet to the process, or to the point in the project where the county has to review their tentative set of data.
I believe that we approved this, and just for a little history, we came in, and I was surprised, and some of the other board was surprised, that this didn't exist as it exists in the cities, and everyone seemed to do a better job at doing this than we did. So we approved to hire this company that does it for Bullhead City and, I believe, Lake Havasu, and that's where we are right now. But I think that we approved it sort of in November or December of last year, but then in the letter that you forwarded, they said they didn't get paid till April. So I think that we're going on sort of a false timeline here, because I was thinking, I think we were thinking, they started October, November, December of last year, but it didn't really start until April or even May. So we, I don't, I don't know how that happened, why they didn't get paid until then, but I think they're. get paid until then, but, um, I, I think they're, they're sort of on time, they said right from the start, you can just tell what a lengthy process it is, uh, so I'm thinking we probably won't get it until something after the new year, yeah. Anyone else have any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Nathan, I was just wondering, it's, it's been almost a year now and we've had ordinances and, and, uh, things change over that past year, are they being updated on our most recent changes and updates?
That was one of the inquiries they had with us when they sent us the, uh, they, I have an index of ordinances they provided, so they had inquired about zoning ordinance that they didn't have, they said the oldest one we had was an amended version of one and I believe the Clerk of the Board's Office and the County Administrator's Office is researching that and we will be providing them any missing ordinances that they don't have. So, the answer to your question is yes, we will be providing them all of the ordinances that, that have been adopted since we gave them the initial, the initial data in December of last year.
Okay, thank you very much, I, I just, I'm new and I hadn't heard anything and I found the file and, and just wanted an update and I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, number 64, Discussion and Possible Action: Ray, accept the Horizon 6 Trail Report for Discussion and Possible Further Action.
Madam Chair, I'd like to thank, if I may have a moment?
Yes, please.
I'd like to thank County Administrator Hendricks for getting us the Safety Engineers' report and the recommendations he made, on the other hand, he, he had some alternatives that he had laid out there within the report, um, including speed humps and various differences in what was considered as the proposed trail. I would like the time to take that report and go actually walk what the county, excuse me, the safety engineer suggested as being a, um, potential trail system, because I, I see, I visualize better than I look at diagrams, so I'd like to go see it, so I'd like to have a continuance if I could on this item.
Do I have a second on that?
I have no particular date, I would just notify the chairman when I was able to, that I completed it and we'd do that, if I do 30 days...
Yeah, make it indefinite.
Mike may distract me, Chairman Angus may distract me and I may not get there, so I'll just send you an email when I've completed it and we can get back on the agenda then.
Madam Chair, one problem I have with that is, we, we beat this to death forever, not that I don't want Supervisor Moss to have the time, but we extended time for Supervisor Moss before on this. I wish y'all'd go along with the will of the board, but I'm prepared to vote today.
Well, we just had the Safety Engineers' Report and his alternatives, what, less than a week, something like that, so...
Okay, so I need a second to Supervisor Moss's motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, it's, uh, indefinite, um, continuation, and with that, we are adjourned, I believe I've, um, broken your record from the last meeting.
You have, and you've laid down the gauntlet.
Thank you, thank you everyone.